Thank you. Ms. Calhoun, you referenced town staff told you that there was an issue with the lighting in your bathroom, or there was an issue with your bathtub. Who on town staff told you that?
Yeah, we had, first there was three guys that came out. I don't know the other two guys' names, but it's, we've been working with Dan, Dan or Dave. I believe it's Dan. But he knows me. He's been out a couple of times.
Okay.
And we just agreed our last time to just, I don't want to hear his numbers. I just want, like, the numbers, he's showing me pH turbidity, whatever, is within the range, but I can see with my eyes that something's not right. So those three results aside, I just said, "You can go with those and I'm going to just Google," because that's all I have left.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was just, I was just just inquiring on that. Thank you, thank you.
Jack Waller?
About 9:30, go later.
Okay.
Thought you were going to give us a break, man.
Amanda Snedeker?
Hello, I'm Amanda Snedeker. I reside at 126 East Main Street. Pretty much Ms. Calhoun, she said everything I have to say. My only question is, is I seem to be the only person at the opposite end of town complaining of brown water. I live on 126 East Main. Everyone's complaining West Main and up. Is there possibly another leak going on somewhere? Could it be the construction that possibly cracked a line somewhere? Why is my water brown? And I haven't had nobody come to my house and ask me any questions. All I get is flush your lines.
Okay.
Who told you to flush, did you call town? I don't know if this is working.
I've emailed.
Okay, you emailed town staff?
Yes, and it's just flush, flush the lines. I'm following everyone's orders. I ran my water on the second for four hours. Had to go take a shower at my sister's because my water didn't clear up. It stayed brown.
Okay. Are you still interested in seeing town staff coming to your home?
Sure, if someone would like to come test our water.
Is it still brown?
Um, I haven't checked it today. I haven't been home. Well, you know, that's my problem. Sometimes there's days I get home at 4:30, 7:30. I'm constantly working and by the time you get home and check it, you guys are all gone.
Right. So if you'll do me a favor and check it and then just email us and then we'll try to make arrangements to get out, if you still have brown water, we'll try to get, make arrangements to get out there when you're there.
I've even emailed photos of the discolored water.
Okay.
Can you give staff your address?
I have it.
You have it?
Is there anyone in particular saying just to flush the lines, or is it just like a general email from town office?
It's just the email. I've even followed the, you know, the response on the water page to flush your cold water and continuously, four hours the other day, just enough to turn the water off to let the tub catch up.
And again, sort of the timeline question that was asked earlier related to Ms. Calhoun and the Brookfield, new construction versus bottom line. How long ago did you notice this starting?
Started back in November.
Of this year, correct? I'm sorry, of 2019, pardon me.
Yes, 2019.
Okay, thank you.
And the black marks on the tub, I can second that. When you go to clean your tub, it just smears.
Okay. Thank you.
Alejandro?
Alejandro.
Alejandro?
Cañadas.
Cañadas?
Hi.
This is for the water report?
Yes. My name is Dr. Alejandro Cañadas. I'm professor of economics at Mount San Mary's University. I would like to follow up a few things that you have said about the water. And some, some of you have mentioned communication, something that I think is very, very important for everyone living here in Emesburg, is to know if the water is safe. We have kids, we have pets, we have each one of us, we are human beings. And especially thinking about our kids and schools around here, the kids ask, "Can we drink the water?" We start classes again, right? We have, what is the rest of the year? So, and I really appreciate all the work that you are doing trying to solve this problem. So something that I think is very important is, are you communicating these things? And the most important thing is, how safe is our water? For all of us who have brown water, right, we are very concerned. Some of us, maybe we have kind of clean water, but we are not, we don't want to drink that water, right? So what is safe? What, which are the limits, right, of safe versus not safe? So I think that we should know more about that. Which are the limits? How you are testing the water? One question that I have is, that is about your communication and how you are telling us that the water is safe. The second one is, what is the cost of testing the water? The last one, if you said, was in June of last year. Because of this problem, are you going to do it again next, this coming June? Is enough. That is the public one that we can see online, right? But who cares what happened last June after what is going on right now? Is any plan to do other testing sooner? I've been talking to other professors in the science department at Mount San Mary's University. Have you talked to anyone at the mound that maybe we can help from the science department? Can we create a program or a plan to do with people in the science, in the labs over there that we can have samples from the different parts of Emesburg? So these are questions that I don't know, right? So I would like to know what are your thoughts about that? But I'm very, very concerned about the reports, costs, and if something that is, we can do it more, why not? And if there are other plans of doing this testing with other independents, and we have the university here, right? So why not? So thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question? Can I ask a question really quick?
Yes.
Have you experienced any brown water yourself in Southgate?
No.
Okay. And just, just to reiterate regarding the, the limits of the test, we, we up here don't, don't know any more than you do, actually. We know, we know as much as everybody else.
Yes. But something that you know is all the work that you are doing. What TJ you have said is amazing, right? But the people living here, they don't know that you are doing all these things. So putting, putting all this information that everyone who lives here knows that you are doing that is very important. And I think that you should announce this in a way that everyone knows.
Absolutely, I agree.
And second, we, we need to work as a community in order, if we have resources, I'm, I'm thinking, right, if we have the mound, if we have scientists living here in this community, can we do something to help, right? Can we volunteer? Do you need that help? I don't know, right? Something that I do know is, sorry, is that can we also do, that is maybe a question for you, that are other towns or places that they are having these problems? How they solve this problem? Or is something that, do we have a cost-benefit analysis?
The unfortunate answer?
Yeah.
Is every town does the same thing. It doesn't matter what state you look up, what municipality, the solution for brown water at all times is flush the hydrants. And it doesn't matter, Virginia, Pennsylvania, Vermont, Maine, Wyoming, Idaho, I think I've Googled and done research on like 37 states. And the, the answer from everyone is flush the water, flush the water, flush the water, flush the water.
Yeah. Okay.
That's the unfortunate answer.
Yeah. Seems like we need to do something more than that.
Correct. And I don't, I don't disagree with you. And I think that's where the discussions have been with the county, as well as talking to developers about some of the other ideas and solutions as to what has happened in other communities and how they've solved those problems.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
But they do test the water every day.
Yeah, if I can answer that just briefly, we do, we do testing, we send testing out to Cottonton Labs monthly. We spend between 2,500 and 3,000 monthly on just routine testing through the Cottonton Labs. I can't tell you exactly what they test for every month. That's something I can get the information out at a later date. We do testing in-house every single day. We have manifest logs that are kept. And we did release that information. We've released it on Facebook, on website. Unfortunately, Channel 9, you're limited. Alert Frederick, if anybody has not signed up for it, please sign up for Alert Frederick. We are, we're working harder to get that information out.
Can I ask you a question about that? It seems like the problem is not in the source where the water is treated, but is from there to where we receive the water.
So we do test water in town.
Different places.
Wait, we do test in town, a different place, we do test at different places in town monthly that's sent off to the labs. So it's not just at the water plant. There are specific locations in town that they also pull samples from. And that's just the monthly routine testing. We did additional testing.
In order to connect this with the communication, are you communicating these things?
So yes, we did. We put it out on Facebook. We put it on website. We put as much information on 99 as we could. We're starting to get the Alert Fredericks out. I don't know how else to get the information out, you know, there's only, you know, and that's, that's where we need the public to, they have some sort of ownership in becoming informed by either checking our website, or checking Facebook, or signing up for the Alert Frederick, or the email newsletter that goes out every month, or the water bill newsletter that hopefully nobody's throwing away, because that does contain information too. So as we expect you guys, you know, to communicate with us, we are trying to better ourselves with our communication as well. We've come leaps and bounds in the last five years with our ability to communicate, and we're going to continue to improve.
Thank you very much.
And don't ever hesitate to call if you have questions. We may not be able to respond right away, but we do our best.
We could always change the Saturday noon emergency broadcast alert tests to water announcements.
Mr. Sweeney?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Cañadas, thank you, number one. I appreciate the support on the communication piece. I think everybody's aligned on that. I think moving forward, I don't know if we'll have a workshop or an agenda item, but it will be something discussed. That question came up earlier. In our next meeting, we will certainly follow up with a dedicated certain amount of time to clarify this. One of the things I think that we're looking to do in our process is modify our communication. And it's not just saying that, you know, here's the test results and here are the numbers. I think it's the interpretation of those numbers that we, we need to move toward, because we have a range of readers there and we're trying to meet the needs of the readers where they are. You know, that sounds like a classroom thing. But the other side of it is, if the message is unclear, it leads to speculation and perhaps inferences that are incorrect. And our hope is that if we can bring forward the testing results, for example, with some interpretation that's beyond just the statistical analysis, where it's hopefully put into, for lack of a better phrase, plain language, so someone can say, "Okay, this is safe," or "We need to be mindful."
Yes.
Now, I have confidence in staff, okay. We are bringing forward safe water. But again, if one gets what looks like, you know, Hershey milk coming out of their spigots, absolutely you got a question, of course. And therefore, you know, that's where we have to fix the problem, or problems, plural. So I hope that, that helps. And the question came up earlier, you know, why wasn't a meeting item agenda tonight? We set our meeting agendas a month prior. So the weight and the momentum of it was, it didn't have the inertia it has now. It doesn't mean that we were dismissive of it. I think our actions spoke for that, that, you know, we tried to be responsive. We were in homes, you know, all of us, I know that. We were at a water distribution event and so on. And I'm not going to that piece. But moving forward, yes, it certainly is going to be in the forefront of meetings and discussions. And so everybody has more of a comfort with what's coming forward communication-wise. And more of a process, I think, what, what events in town related to water users, or who's using water and what amounts, and there's a risk of a trigger to sediment. I think we're seeing that now with these Alert Frederick messages. And to reiterate what Mr. Burns said and Ms. Willet said, there is a burden on we as citizens that we, we got to sign up for these things. I'm a Luddite. I hate technology. My carrying a cellphone is like an homage to my family, you know, not being an idiot. So I get that, I get that alert. I signed up for it. I get it. And it is useful to me. And if there are others out there who don't like technology, I respect that. But this is a tool that will serve us, you know, in that two-way street thing. I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Mr. President, just two things real quick. Yeah, to touch on that, what Mr. Dobson said earlier, perhaps I was going to suggest that this evening, you know, hindsight's 2020 now, but next month, just to have a standing agenda item, water update, you know, water quality update. The next question's for Ms. Willet. It was, I was asked earlier, you probably don't have it readily available, so maybe we can put it online. The question was asked this evening, there's reference to like where the water's coming from. It comes off the mountain, it flows into Brookfield, or this, this particular line flows into Pembroke. Do we have that readily available? We could put it online, just to...
It's on very large water and sewer improvement plans that are approved through document. I'm talking four by three.
Yes.
Maybe not four by three, that's a little much. But they're very large plants.
Schematics.
That, there's some areas that, you know, Commissioner Burns sat in a meeting, we don't know the flow of water exactly because these, these, in certain areas, certain areas we do, that are so old that we don't know. And as we're going through, we're learning and making notes where this are, where these things are. I don't know that we'd be able to put that up on the website. If somebody had a particular question, they could certainly email us. And obviously, we don't want to put our water and sewer plans out on the internet.
Okay. I mean, I, I think it was more of a question this evening while we're talking about it to look at it, but I don't think they're readily available to, to put up on the, okay.
Oh, up there, no. No. But if somebody had a particular question about their residence, they certainly could email or give us a call. And, you know, we'll do our best to explain it to, you know, to them. But as far as, you know, public, you know, publicizing the plans for particular developments and such, it's certainly not recommended.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just have something for staff. It's another one of those things we can't do. How do we get something put on the agenda that comes up that is an emergency that we need to talk about, such as the water problem?
So you, go ahead.
Mr. Davis, that could go through the president of our board. So Mr. Sweeney, if we brought something to him, and if the mayor signs off on it, the president has that within his authority to add an agenda item. It's, there's also an advertising requirement related to that, though. So we have that cut off as well.
Right. Typically, they, they recommend that you have a week's notice. So a week prior to the town meeting, the agenda needs to be finally set. It's not a practice they encourage, because you vote on your agenda items in a public meeting, and you're adding things to it without it being voted on at a public meeting. However, it can be done, but it needs to be done a week ahead of time.
Right. Because this, this could almost fall into a public safety emergency. And it's something we just can't wait on, to the point where I'm not willing to wait another month. I think we got to have a special workshop within two weeks and, and address this stuff and get staff here. I want to know what the tar stuff is, you know? At first I heard there was tar.
Not tar.
Well, whatever it is, it's something that's not supposed to be in somebody's water, you know? And I hope you all understand that the problem that we are facing, the last two people that spoke, it only hits your place on, on East Main Street. And we only have one, one place in Southgate. So that's what really has us puzzled. Why is it, why is it picking your house? You know, it doesn't make any sense. It's just, and that's what has us baffled.
Can I say, I've seen on Emesburg Cares, people down the road from me, several houses...
Come on up here, Amanda.
It doesn't do us any good.
Several houses down from me are stating that they're having brown water. And people are encouraging them to get and call you guys, but the one guy simply stated, "He doesn't care." I don't know why he wouldn't care. He has two young children. My water was brown. I'm here. I don't know why. But I just want to state that there are other people saying it. I'm just the only one, I feel, that's announcing it.
Sure.
And we thank you for that.
That's a great thing.
It's, it's difficult as we continue to try to pinpoint exactly what's going on if people are not reporting it. So the fact that you did report it, and that's our one documented case on East Main Street, that's what we know of. And that's what we're able to react on. So it's, we thank you for reporting that, and we appreciate that you do. And we hope other people, you know, see your example and follow you, so that we can try to figure out exactly why it's not affecting every home in town, but it's being located in, in certain areas.
Yes.
And the other thing you gotta, you're not going to believe this one, but we've had people reporting bad water that don't live in town. They're not even on our water system. And when we approach them and say, "Can I come see you?" You know, until I quit answering on Facebook, they go, "Well, I don't live in town." "Well, how do you have dirty water then?" "Well, I don't." I just jumped in on the bandwagon. So, you know, there's all kinds of issues out there that it's hard for people to believe, because they were, the one guy was posting the same picture that had been out for a couple of weeks, and he was just using the same picture over and over again. And we go, "Well, this isn't your bathtub." "Well, yeah, I just posted it there." So there's a whole bunch of issues out there that staff's fighting. And, but we need to...
Yeah, when I, when I posted that photo, I had, it was a lot of people who replied back and said they were having the same. And I know several of them, and like I said, they live right down the street from me and have young children. Why they're not reporting on it is beyond me. You owe that to your children.
Well, hopefully in two weeks, we'll have some results from the things that are going to happen this week. And by reaching out to the county, we'll get some extra help from them. And, you know, maybe we can get together.
We will know a lot more after they open up Wayne'sboro tomorrow. We'll know the significance of the leak, where it is. Unfortunately, as I mentioned, if it's under the road, all we can do is put a valve on at that point and come back with repairs, because it has to go through state highway, because it's under state highway road. We're hoping that it's not, and it's in our, it's where we can repair it. And then we'll go down and fix the one on North Seton Avenue. And then we'll have a lot better information. We're drafting letters to FEMA and Provincial House this week in an effort to have better communication, at least so we know when they're working and we can give notice out and find out exactly what they're doing. You know, we can only speculate. And then also with the developments, that is that particular area part of the problem? And that these other areas, such as East Main, West Main, Lincoln, are just affected because of those areas? Because the brown water's coming in from Wayne'sboro Pike, or it's because of these connections in Brookfield? And is it just takes time? Because it doesn't, everybody doesn't mysteriously get brown water at once. It has to feed through the system. So if you're getting brown water later than somebody up here in Brookfield, is it because it's coming from there and it's traveling through the line? And those are all things that, you know, one, the leak detection specialist helps with, two, fixing all these repairs, working with the Provincial House and working with the county that we can hopefully pinpoint, because this is unprecedented. In the 25 years that our Director of Public Works, which most of you probably know, he's never, we've never experienced a problem like this. We'll have hit or miss brown water, but never of this magnitude. So we're trying our hardest.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Many sleepless nights.
Any other questions? Barrett Tivna Turner? Turner? Oh, goodness gracious, people, right? Terrible.
My name is Barrett Turner, and I live at 527 West Main Street. Calling, coming up today, actually, because I had a very pleasant conversation with Ms. Willet this afternoon, and she recommended that I come and voice my concerns at the meeting tonight. My wife has called the town offices a number of times over the last several months. And yes, we have brown water, and also water with black flecks in it as well. A filter that would last me one to two months. I've been changing every week for my house. It's been a very frustrating time, a time full of fear, frankly. I have six small children, worrying about the water quality for my own children. I don't have a lot of white shirts. I'm not as concerned about those as I am about my family members. Over the last several months, my wife has also developed an ailment dealing with her stomach lining and intestines. The doctors have diagnosed her with increased stomach acid. That could be unrelated, but simply because these things are, the water quality issue is prolonged, we have to wonder if her symptoms are not correlated actually with the water rather than something else in her life. One thing that I wanted to say to Ms. Willet today, the offer to cover any increase in our water bill was generous. I appreciate that. But what I wanted to relay was the costs of an increased water bill are not going to be that high. Even if they were, I agree with the gentleman before who said that it shouldn't be something on the town citizens anyway to, to ever cover an increased cost of flushing their own water to get rid of tar flecks or whatever they are and other sediment. But the cost of filters, the cost of other things that we have to cover, buying, buying water because we're unsure, we don't trust the tap water, these are costs that we have to bear on top of our, our normal budgets. So those, if the town would consider reimbursing us for filters that we would not normally have to buy to purify our own water, that would be something that I would think would be actually true generosity, or actually maybe just justice on the part of the town. Some other things that I wanted to ask about was, I'm glad that the town is undertaking more water testing as this problem is undergoing. Is the town testing the water during the times of high turbidity, or only after the turbidity's passed? I, I would be more than welcome to have town staff into my house anytime the brown water's actually happening, to test my water then and there, rather than a day or two later after the flushing's been all completed and everything's back to normal. So I really would welcome town staff into my house anytime, day or night, to test the water during these periods of increased turbidity. 527 West Main Street. Be happy to give my contact information to anyone afterwards. So testing during the times of high turbidity, during the times when there's sediment, that would be interesting data. After it's gone, I mean, it's not really that interesting, I suppose, as far as water quality goes. And then the, the last thing is, the amount of work that you all have put in, the goodwill, it's, it's evident. The lack of communication, though, I, I didn't hear about any of the work that TJ had put in or anybody else until tonight. So I'm very glad to hear it, that there is a breakdown in communication. Even with the goodwill, though, it seems like nobody really knows what's going on with the water and why this is being caused. And I'm actually leaving the meeting with less trust in the water supply than I hoped to leave with coming into it. I had a town, who were the two gentlemen on the call with us today, Ms. Willet?
Mr. Fistol and Mr. Click.
And one of them suggested that I actually get rid of the whole house filter, because the whole house filter was perhaps causing an increased sedimentation in my water. Well, after the various other things in the water are already named, I mean, there's no way I'm going to get rid of my whole house filter for that reason. But there's also been a feeling, you know, everybody's frustrated, nobody knows what's going on. There are times when, as, as just a member of the community, I felt like the burden is on me to fix my own problem here with my own water, to sign up for a certain alert system, to figure out my own filtration. It's just been very discouraging as far as trust in the town and town governance. So I wanted to bring my concerns and also some suggestions about reimbursement for filters, as well as testing during the times of turbidity, rather than just random times or once a month, during the times when there's a problem. That would be the most interesting thing for town members to know about. Thank you very much for hearing me out. Again, I'm more than welcome any town staff into my house to do any water testing during these times. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. One thing I'll address regarding the signup piece, and maybe, you know, again, communication, the bigger picture. In dealing with the issue, trying to do this in a, I guess, in a judicious manner, we'll hear third-hand information, we'll get it from a Facebook source, and someone will say this and that gets echoed. And, you know, I hate to say the cliche, the echo chamber, but sometimes inauthentic information comes forward. And that's why we're trying to really open up to, to hear individuals, not just tonight, but the phone calls which you made. And we're trying to get people to recognize there is value in dealing with town government, dealing with the commissioner, dealing with the mayor, and dealing with staff. If for only to, you know, your piece of data could help solve arguably the bigger crime, you know, to look at it that way. You know, it's like the Columbo investigation. One piece might not seem important now, but down the line, when we have a cumulative effect of information, we can act on it in a better manner. So that's why we're looking for this information. And I, I hate to hear your distrust increasing, and I'm, I understand it. The other side of it, I'll say anecdotally, I'm one of six kids. I feel your pain in other ways. You know, I get the household and the nature of the household, wanting what's best for your young people. You know, I'm a parent, I have three of my own. I get it. You know, we all do live here. But we all do carry forward this, this notion that we are trying to improve this, we're trying to get it right. And I think what we've heard is, we're getting more clues now because of, because we are having more conversations. For town staff, to their credit, in conversations with staff members, for those who have had careers in this industry will say, I mean, this board here, we're all temps, okay? You know, we're here trying to serve what's best for the community and using our best judgment. But using the professional judgment of the individuals who are there in the field, when they're coming forward and saying, this is completely new to them, we have to support them in saying... You know, we're here trying to serve what's best for the community and using our best judgment. But using the professional judgment of the individuals who are there in the field, when they're coming forward and saying, this is completely new to them, we have to support them in saying, okay, we need to get everyone to kind of shift their paradigm, expand their investigations, and narrow down what the possibilities are. So, it is frustrating, and I appreciate that. But my hope is that beyond the sincerity of effort, there is real genuine effort toward closing this case, to getting this right, to fixing this. So, I hope there's some reassurance in that to you other than, you know, walking away more distrustful. So, I hope that's the case.
I certainly feel listened to and that the commissioners and the town staff are receiving everybody's complaints. But I guess the distrust is just nobody knows what's happening. And yet, we still have to live in our houses and drink our water and bathe with our water and do whatever else we would normally do. Or maybe we need to go buy water from the outside and bring it in. I mean, that's the... That's what I mean by the element of distrust is not the lack of goodwill or maliciousness, not at all.
No, I agree with that.
Not at all. Just nobody has any idea, it seems. Maybe we're narrowing it down towards certain things. But let's say we open up Waynesboro Pike and, well, that fixes maybe something, but not everything. And then we're still looking.
Well, that's the nature of it, though. We go from, you know, we live from day to day. You know, we go from problem to problem and solving them. So, you know, these... Our team, I, you know, to characterize it, they're pitfalls. I mean, they're not gonna give up on this. So, I hope you don't.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have one question. Do you... How much do you pay for your filters?
So, normally, a $7 filter would last me a month or two, but I've been replacing those every week. So, now, I mean, been replacing three, four more filters just in the last month than we would normally do.
Do you buy them in a case at the time?
I buy them not in a case, but, you know, from Lowe's in packs of two.
Has that been helpful? Has that been effective? And...
Well, like with the brown or the black flecks, for example, those stop at the filter.
Okay.
Those stay within the, you know, the kind of simple plumbing, whole-house filters that you can attach to the line pretty close to the source. Oftentimes, they'll have translucent or transparent plastic case that the filter... That seals the filter into the line. I can see the black flecks in there. I don't see them coming out of my tap, as far as I know. Now, I haven't opened the aerator on a tap. Maybe I should and look in to see if those flecks are making it past the filter. But it looks to me like it's stopping some of the more troubling sediment. But also, my water isn't as brown as others because my filter turns white to almost, like dark blood red or black even, I mean, truly just red because it's catching the rust and the other metal corrosion that's in the line. So, it's better than others, but that's because I have the filter on. Now, over time, we experience a drop in water pressure because of that, because of the filter, right? And that's how we first were included into this is the water pressure was dropping much sooner than it would otherwise. And we went down to investigate and...
Sure enough, right.
And then everyone else started talking about the brown water, so...
Gotcha.
Now, the brown water's always been there for us. The filter catches it. And again, you know, it's like a month or two... These are filters that are billed to be three- to six-month filters. Now, we use more water than a typical household, so I don't expect it to last what it would be on the label. But to go from a month or two to a week, I mean, it's a pretty dramatic decrease in filter life in that regard, just in the last couple of months.
Thanks.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Alrighty. Diane Walbrecker?
Hi. Diane Walbrecker, 535 West Main Street. I live right next to Barrett, and we were just talking. You guys do have a problem because I don't have any brown water at all in our house. And we live next door. So, I really wish you guys good luck in solving this. And I think it is important that people come forward and say whether or not they've had any problems because that could help you get to the bottom of it. But I certainly don't understand why that would be the case. But I just... I always sign up for public comments.
Do you have a filter on your... Diane?
I just figured I'd...
Do you have a filter on your house?
No. No. No filter.
And that's just as important as you letting us know that you have clear water while he has brown water. My neighbor has filters and they're backing up. And I don't have a filter, and I've never, ever had a problem. So, we... That's the dilemma is the rhyme or reason why it's hitting one house and why it's...
If you don't have a filter, it's not gonna catch anything. If you got a filter, it's gonna catch it, right or wrong.
And you have to...
Wait a minute.
Mr. Sweeney?
Hold on, hold on. Mrs. Sweeney?
Diane?
No. What?
Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you, Diane.
Do you... Anybody else have any comment? Did not sign up from the sheet. Would you like to comment, sir? Okay.
Can I add one thing?
Mr. Can I come up here to the podium, please?
I hear multiple people saying they don't have a problem, and I'm really curious to know. Like, I just asked her if she's filling a tub. If you don't fill a tub, you can't see it in a pitcher, you can't see it in a glass, you can't see it in something small. You have to fill your tub. And when you do, I have pictures weekly of our tub that is... It looks like swamp water. And if I filled it in a glass, you'd be like, sure, I'll drink this water. Fill your tub. Fill your tub. You will see it. I have a picture my husband sent me when he got home of the black flecks and of the green murky water. But you have to fill your tub. She said she doesn't. So, I'm just curious how many people aren't filling their tubs to see.
So, that means you... When you draw your water, it's not dirty until you fill your tub. You don't see it.
Yeah, you have to... Yeah, you have to have it in multitude to see the clarity, and you can see it then. Yeah. You can't see it in a glass.
Diane, come up to the podium.
I just remembered, my son gives my grandson a bath at least two times a week, so I'll ask him. He's never said anything about it, but I'll ask and let you guys know.
Please give your name and your...
Erin O'Lassec. I live on 1405 Red Bullwood Drive in Brookfield. We... I was saying, telling people, I'm a stay-at-home mother, so sometimes I know there's brown water before other people get home and say that there's brown water. But you do have to fill your tub. But my toilet water is also brown. I fill glasses at the sink, but I'm also using water more because I'm home. I fill glasses. I wouldn't drink it. You could never convince my children to drink it. We've lived here since 2004, and we've always off and on had brown water, the black flecks in the tub. But prior to this break since October, it was because the town was flushing lines or work was being done over behind the school. So, there was a reason. And it is way more... Happening way more now. And not only with the filling of the tub, ruined laundry, the same things that everybody else was saying. So, that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. We're trying to get all the information we can because we're trying to understand why some have it, some don't.
You don't have to fill a tub.
First, give your name and your...
Mary Bligh, 1317 Huntley Circle. And this is my dog's water.
You don't have to fill a tub.
Can I ask a general question?
Yeah, thanks.
I was gonna throw it out there to everybody. Over the Christmas holiday before the 31st, was everybody's water clean? We weren't hearing anything over the Christmas holidays.
It's been terrible since mid-October and hasn't gotten any better.
Yeah, do we keep emailing if it's never better? That's the thing. I've sent emails to...
Okay, so if we... So, yours is still green? Your water's still green, huh?
No change. After they've run it for five hours down the street, no change. Since October to present day.
And we don't contact every time either. If it happens once initially and it's not by the next day, we're not calling. My husband's not sending the picture every single day.
Yes, I'll give your name and your...
May I interject, Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
We have an agenda item for an audit presentation. Can we go ahead and postpone that so I can have our auditors leave and we'll come back?
No, no, stay with us. This is...
Is everybody okay with auditors coming back?
Just one question. Do we have any fiscal... Sorry, do we have any state-level requirement to put this forward at this time?
No.
No? Great. Mrs. Sweeney, I have no issue with it personally.
Tickles been death.
Okay. That's fine. They will come back next month? Or will we have a special meeting?
Yes, February. I'll put them on the agenda.
I'm sorry about that. But we're trying to fix... We're trying to get all the concerns, and we're trying to figure out where all the stuff's coming from. Because everybody's learning different stuff every day. Can I have your name and your address, please?
Kevin Ball, I live right here in Southgate. My concern is similar to what my neighbor here was talking about is how are you guys gonna compensate us?
I don't know, though.
This filter right here, the white one, brand new. The brown one, oops, five days old.
Mr. Ball, it's good... Could you show us too?
How many I bought? These, probably 10 since October. They're supposed to last three to six months.
And what's your street address in Southgate? Just curiously.
318.
Okay, 318.
Yeah. Right across the street from TJ.
Perfect, okay, great. And have your neighbors had the same problem that you've had?
Absolutely.
Great, okay. And you said since the start of October? Did I hear that right?
Mid-October.
Okay. And has it been the same degree of filling up the filters, using up the filters? Okay.
Mr. Ball, I spoke with you...
So, I got my quarterly bill today, and I got a $25 discount. So, the bill that I got last quarter of 2019, it was about $85 more expensive than any water bill I've ever had since I've lived here for six years. And it stated I used over 5,000 more gallons than I've ever used.
Did we figure out if you had a leak? Was there... Was there an investigation to see if there was a leak?
Yeah, I've had... I've had the people from town come to my house probably five times.
Okay.
There's no leak.
There's no leak?
There's no leak.
Commissioner Ritz, if I can interject, that's not been confirmed that he does not have a leak?
There's no leak.
Um...
If there was a leak, there'd be a puddle of water in my yard. There'd be water running down my walls, my basement.
Mr. Ball, you need to speak to the board, and we'll speak on their behalf.
Understand.
But we want to hear what you have to say.
Yes.
So, my main concern is compensation. How am I gonna be compensated for your all's water that you're giving me that I can't drink? I can't give my pets. It's not safe to be around. I have to buy filters, overcharge on my bill. What are you guys gonna do? I don't... I do not want a kick-a-can-down-the-road answer. What are you gonna do?
I don't know that we can answer directly without looking at policy, but number one, you're here. So, here's what I can tell you. If staff has come forward with information that there's still information that's undetermined regarding whether there's a leak or not, that's something that we would have to chase down. Once that's factually determined...
Your officials determine there's no leak after two visits to my house looking for a leak.
So, if we have that in hand, that's confirmed, which contradicts...
It's been confirmed.
Well, but it contradicts what I've just heard from the town manager, okay? So, once that's, you know, absolutely confirmed...
She can sit there and say there's a leak in my house all day long. Your town officials have been to my house to look for a leak two different times. There's no leak. There's no puddle water in my basement. There's no water puddling outside. There's no leak.
Okay. Bear with what I'm saying. So, based on the fact that's been put in front of me from her, I'm also listening to you. I have two contradictory pieces of information. So, once we have, as the board, conclusive evidence, then we refer to what policy says.
How are we gonna get it?
How are we gonna get what, please?
A conclusive answer.
Will we determine whether there's a leak or not?
They've been to my house two times already and determined there's no leak.
Mr. Ball, truly, I understand what you're saying, okay? Are you a plumber?
I'm not.
Okay. Nor am I...
Ah, there's a 40-year plumber, and he's looked in my house.
Okay.
A master plumber.
Okay. So, you have a very good source on that, okay?
Absolutely.
But at the same time, as a group here, we have to defer to town staff, okay? So, I'm not saying you're not telling it...
I'm telling you, town sasped in my house twice to look for it, and there's no leak.
But a moment...
I went to it three times.
But a moment ago, I heard from the town manager who said something contradictory to that.
Kathy, come on over. Let's look at the leak.
Sir, sir, just... So, here, I'm trying to give you a sort of a chain of events that we can pursue, okay? So, let's accept that issue just that there is an issue there. We don't agree on that based on the facts. So, once the board hears conclusively, let's say that there is a leak, okay?
Okay, how are we gonna get conclusive evidence?
Hold on, let me finish, please. So, let's conclude, let's say that there is a leak. This is hypothetical, okay? We look to see the accountability for the leak, we address the leak. Other side of it, let's say there is no leak and there's some other issue. There's overbilling, as you said, or there's some other problem. Then the town will take action at that time. But until we achieve that information where we, as a board, have some understanding, then we can't say, hey, right now, we're gonna solve this problem as much as we'd like to, honestly. I mean, I don't want anybody here to suffer. I don't think anybody on this board wants to.
Honestly, I'm done having your townspeople come to my house because they've been to my house six, seven times, two times look for a leak, and nothing.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm with you. I understand you. I get it.
I'm done. I'm done dealing with you guys. It's more kick the can down the road. So, back to my main question, how am I gonna be compensated for the filters and all the flushing in my house? Dollars. I want to hear dollars. How are you gonna compensate?
I can't answer that, then.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Sir?
Commissioner Kathy?
Yes, sir.
When we did DePaul Street, I don't know if you were here, I think we compensated for filters when we had the problem on DePaul Street. This problem is never going to go away. Do you understand that? I know you have a problem, but every single town...
Frederick County knows about this problem, and our property values are gonna continue to go down until this gets fixed.
I understand that, sir. I work in water, 40 years myself.
Good.
I put the big pipes in the ground before you get your little pipe hooked to your house. I've seen the pipes. All the towns have it. The brown water, we can't give... We're trying to isolate the problem why the silt's getting disturbed the way it is. But we have older pipes that are cast iron through town that are... Or it's what the rust and the discolored water's coming from. Not from your new lines that you have.
The straw's probably fixed.
Well, it's everyone's problem. We're trying to deal with that, but we're trying to... Yeah, we're trying to deal with it. We're doing... We're trying to. We are. We really are trying to. And they've been working hard on it, and we're gonna be working hard on it. We're gonna have other meetings on it to try to get fixed. We're gonna do everything we can. We're going to do everything we can.
Mr. Ball, let me ask you a question. You have a sick child at home, and you take him to the doctor for the first time, and the child doesn't get any better, do you put the child in his room and say, I'm not taking him back to the doctor again, I don't want a second opinion, I don't want, I'm not going to deal with it anymore? That's what it is, we have a sick problem, and by you cutting us off your property, isn't going to let us fix it. We want, if we were ignoring you, that's one thing, but we're coming every time that you call, we're there, we're trying to fix it.
He had just said to me that he wants to have town officials come inspect, right, and come try and find a leak. They've been there twice.
All right, but we might bring in, we might bring in.
I've allowed that, I've done everything I could do on my half.
What if we bring in?
I've allowed everything that you've asked, I've communicated emails, pictures, everything.
What if we bring, what if we bring in a, what if we bring in an outside agency? Yeah, I appreciate that, pal, thank you very much.
I was just going to ask Mr. Ball if he has copies of receipts for his filters, but he left the room. So Dr. Turner, do you, apparently you keep receipts for your filters? I can't guarantee the town can do anything, but tell you what, why don't you just email me, I'll see what I can do. Okay, thank you.
So basically, to reimbursement for filters, that would be a board decision, and that's what I told Mr. Turner, and that's why he's here tonight, because that's not something I can do at my level. But the problem is, is after, you know, conversations with her, I don't know who has, we don't know who has filters in town, that's, that's your prerogative whether or not you have a filter in, in your house. So that's something that we'll have to figure out how to work through. Staff has been to Mr. Ball's house, there is a leak, it's internal, it's his responsibility to figure it out, he needs to hire a plumber, there are no leaks on the town side, not from any of our connections, and that's, that's what he's been told, he acknowledged it last, last quarter, said, well, let's wait and see what next quarter brings. Next quarter brings, his usage is still high, still indicates a leak, he's been informed of that, and that's, town staff can't do anything with his leak, that's something he has to take ownership of and hire a plumber.
Just, I want to just address, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all so much for coming and sharing with us and being civil about it. You all got to see firsthand what we deal with, with some of our people, and it's tough for us, it's tough for us. Our town staff has been treated that way, and it just makes it, we're here with you, we want to figure it out. If I could sit here till 3:00 in the morning, if we could come up with an answer, I'd be right here with you. But we also, it gets kind of tough when you have people that, that show no respect for, I really don't care about myself, but for our staff. And so thank you all, the ones that are remaining, for being civil about this.
And I'm one of five people in the world that don't have Facebook, so, you know, I don't, maybe I should, maybe I'll see more.
But maybe they can get, you never know. If you have filters, receipt filters and stuff for your filters, bring them in, and we'll see what we can do about them, because I'm pretty sure.
And please let Mr. Ball know that I just threw it out there, but I don't know if anybody's.
Till we get the water situation.
I can't contact him.
What if we don't have water filters on our house? How do we get compensated then? So how's that fair to the entire residents of Emmitsburg, if you're only going to compensate those with the filters?
I really don't think we can make it, give you a good answer without talking legally, what we can, we're allowed to do legally. So we're going to need to bring our town attorney in, that's why we need to have a special meeting with our town attorney being here.
I don't want you guys to make, I don't want you guys to make some decision up here, and only a quarter of the residents get compensated.
Process, process, process.
Right, so.
Equitable process.
Thank you.
I have receipts for all the water we've purchased thus far, and we are getting ready to purchase a whole in-house unit on Thursday, because we can no longer wait. I'm trying, I'm confused about the leak versus not leak, I'm just hearing this.
If we could invite you up to the dais, to the podium, sorry.
I'm just trying to figure it out, because I think his issue was with, and maybe I'm wrong, but was with the brown water and everything, not so much the usage. So if he's coming about the brown water, then why is he being singled out for having a leak?
Well, he has two separate issues. So initially, we, it's okay. Initially, we dealt with him over his brown water, and then one of his comments was his high usage. So then when we look back on his previous bills, he does have high usage, and this was the quarter prior to any of the brown water issues. So he was notified at the end of September, September quarterly bill, that he has high usage that indicates a leak based off his prior usage years, quarters. And that's something we routinely do, our system will kick out something that appears to have high usage above and beyond. So he, so in the midst of helping him with his brown water issue, we went out and said, you have, it appears you have a leak, yes, town staff did minimal checks on all our lines and minimal checks on his toilets, but you can't determine a toilet leak without really investigating it. And he was told, you have a possible leak, maybe in your ice maker, maybe in your toilet, and he says, I'll keep an eye on it, we'll reevaluate next quarter. So it's two separate issues, it's brown water and the excessive usage are two, because his usage.
Not from flushing.
No, his, his usage is, was exactly the same in September as it is in December, in fact, it went down a little bit. So it's two separate issues.